The, um, the, the, the thing about this. The thing about this is that the notice boards apparently have got two sides to it. One is for, um, use of the public as long as it's not, um, advertising a business. And the other side, which is locked apparently, is, um, which is like, um, council business. So if anyone's allowed to put posters on there, there, you know, there's, um, advertising an event or a protest that they're doing. So the, the public are allowed to use that side of it. Uh, so we're not allowed to put, um, political notices on there. Um, and such things. But that's basically, um, what it's about, I don't know if you've tried to add to that.
No, the only thing I would add to that is that I think a lot of what the Chair has just said has always been, um, sort of implied, if you like. And it's been monitored that way, but it's never ever been formally thought down in a way with any notice put in the board. So therefore it can lead to a little bit of confusion or misunderstanding. So all that is suggested there is something to be, but imminent as far as anybody wanting to provide you with is clear what the, uh, and what we say and what's to appear in there. And that is, um, where did I have picked up that other councils across the country used? Um, you know, there's several different versions of that. That's, that's the, sort of, what I thought was the best combination of where did I have picked up from elsewhere.
It's a little bit ambiguous, I think.
Okay, I don't think it's a target to...
This board is intended for community notices, aren't they? Did you argue that any events that's happening in the community, be it the property or not, is, um, is it community benefit sort of thing?
Personally, I would, I would say I'd take it that way, but it's, it's up to you to make, uh, to maybe remind us to what we're still...
I mean, in another instance, if it wasn't our notice board, we would put an agenda on, from the lyric. Where we were making them, can we put a notice on that?
Well, we are a community organisation, or a charity, or whatever. It's not a private business that is advertising that to people. This is where I think the distinction is drawn.
Right.
But that's my question.
On wood sets.
Right.
I've always, if anything's going on for you, I've always put one on wood sets. You know, okay?
Yeah, I think we're a community organisation.
Have we, like, some kind of issues there? Is there some kind of complaint or...
Well, we've had an issue on it, but, um, it's not really a discussion in here. But, I mean, the reason that, the reason that it, the reason it's on the agenda is because there's been some confusion about, oh, can you get more cards and stuff? You know, that basically.
Sorry, can I just ask, how many four-one-three counts do we have?
Um, we have three now.
Three.
Coronation Park, just one at the lyric.
And then one at the top by the way.
Good. But I think what we need to do is, because, um, you know, it, what has led to confusion is, and because we've been in a situation where, um, I could, I mean, if we got a problem about standing orders, you can look in your standing orders, you can find out where it is. As far as this is concerned, we don't have anything minuted. There's nothing in any minutes going back as far as you want to go. Um, there's nothing in there. If we minute it at this meeting, that that's exactly what we have to our, uh, notice boards are used for. Then we've got, uh, a starting point. You know, we've actually got a, a position on it and we can stand by that position. So we know exactly then. There's no confusion. We know exactly what, uh, what they can and can't be used for. So, you know, does anybody...
Chair, that one in Cor, uh, Coronation Park, could we put somewhere else? Have we any land, say, avenues or something like that?
Why do you want to move it though?
Well, we've got one there, that's brilliant, yeah.
But I mean, why wouldn't it? Lots of problem there.
Well, there is no advertisement, so, uh, Lord and Hill, yes.
Don't know, don't know, councillor.
One of the things I have noticed about the one I keep going past Coronation Park is they're all like expired notices. You know, when people put something up advertising an event, but it might say twenty-third of September or something like that and it's still there. Are we allowed to take that though?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, they are.
What we, as I say, what we, what we need to do tonight is just that we, we, we decide on what we want to do as far as notice boards are concerned. And then we've got it, you know, that's the rule then. So can we have a proposal and second for that? All in favour?
Second of that after Dan. I'm sorry. Maybe we could do this alone.
Yeah.
To approve proposals made at a meeting with Dinnington Rugby Club.
Not one by law, no. Um, has everybody read the summary? Just trying to scratch me off maybe now. Um, yeah, well, there's been little, little, um, communication between the two rugby clubs since, since this. Um, as you read in the earlier chair, uh, I was asked them to come back to us with a, with what they propose as a rental payment. Um, having an email sent confirming that and that the group is not going to, um, uh, bring forth through by way of a figure. Um, it was actually, uh, you know, a pretty cordial meeting, uh, but I was interested in relative positions and, uh, they understood where we were coming from. Um, they wanted to, obviously to try and get something out of it for themselves, which obviously not what we could commit to at that time. Uh, which is the wind farm, um, or proposal to, that the council support and in their pursuit of getting a windmill. Um, but I'll always say it's all, you know, just ignore the proposal as in the council, they will consider it, that's all they can do. Um, they're keen to be active, which they're electricity to those which they're going to stay with, they're going to pay, they're going to set yourself for, uh, they're going to come up with a quid pro quo at the time. I mean, but obviously we're not looking to commit at that time. Um, they haven't submitted anything to us, uh, on our side yet, so where we are is that, uh, that was what, some of that is what was discussed at that particular meeting. Um, the feedback from yourselves, having read that, what are your thoughts, your views and your opinions of what was discussed?
I think the thing is, is probably as well, is that it's fair to say that, um, that we've got them between me two. Uh, so, you know, it could be that, um, they've got to have their meeting yet to make any kind of decision for, for proposal.
For the year of their meeting tonight.
Yeah, I think it is, yes, yeah, yeah. So I think that, you know, we, we, uh, probably at next meeting, I mean...
That meeting, same magnitude.
Same magnitude, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Do they acknowledge the fact they haven't, if you'd like, recognised our contribution to their, of course, even if nobody's actually changed hands? By the fact they only, kind of, they, they, they acknowledge they haven't actually recognised that for two or three years now? Uh, and around to take away, uh, actions to look at. That won't be for this year because the progress for this year will be in print for the entire season. But they're looking to do something to recognise this for next year.
No, no, I did, uh, council did a, um, a, well, the council did a survey, uh, two thousand and twelve. Um, and in that it said that, uh, the rent would, as a commercial rent, I mean, this is not, this can't be what we're looking at or they're looking at. But, but the commercial rent would be five thousand pounds. Um, so, you know, uh...
I think the discussion change was made there between commercial and sporting, but it's probably a dispute that thing.
You know, it's, it's, but that, that, that was just, uh, starting point from, you know, the, the, that's the only starting point we've got, so.
It's one of the problems I have is that on, on actually, with number three, is Rupert will present a full grant to us. Surely it says that she should present a figure to them or present a figure to us?
Yeah. I think what we were trying to do was that we were trying to, uh, they, they agreed that they need to pay rent. That's basically, you know, they've got, that's what they've agreed. So we would, we thought that the easiest way out of it for us is rather than us try, um, sticking one to them. It's that we'd see what they came to us with and then we discuss it and then we come back and say, whatever it is. I mean, if they come back with some kind of derisive figure then obviously, you know, we, we agree with that. But it's just what we were looking for, we're starting point. Because it's, it's easy for us to sit here and say, well, we want five thousand quid. Um, you know, we don't know what situation there in, um, in reality. So which is all, it might be that we get that in terms of, as a starting point. You know, the weaker look at it, because there's some kind of basis, um, to deal with it. Because to be honest, I have no idea. Yeah, it's a little weird, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Well, you're right.
Just, uh, just, uh, just, uh, just, uh, just, uh...
Yeah, it was just a thought that occurred to me when I was reading it first of all. They are a business, aren't they really? I mean, they are making money.
They are a charity, but...
They're a charity, yeah. They're making money, they have income.
Yeah.
You're saying that, you know, they might put forward a device, they often might put forward a very, very good offer. But you don't know what their approximate income is. How do we know, how could we judge that? Are we entitled to know it?
We have the, that's taken, uh, we should have.
Of, so...
Because of grants, because we have always given a grant for the rent, so that's where...
There's been no paperwork for a grant since two thousand and thirteen. So...
So there's, there's no documentation about why the grant was on?
The grant's always been in place.
Back in two thousand and thirteen, yeah. It, it's been a historical thing that, kind of, the, you know, whatever the rental agreement was, uh, corresponding grant paperwork or whatever would come through and no money would ever actually change ours. That's how it's always been in the past, the last couple of years. Uh, there's been no, no communication at all.
Well, I think it's all...
No, I could just explain it, I would just go after that.
So it's a really, it's a really restarting everything.
Yeah.
That's why we, that's why we were looking at doing it, um, letting that come to us first.
I agree, they, they are doing wonderful work with all the schools and everything, and all the other leagues and whatnot, which... What, is it just because it comes from one of them? I mean, it's not just anything, kids, I mean, we, we took it from us, the council, but, uh, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It isn't just because of them, I mean, I've got to agree, I think what we need to do, the group or the board, I, I don't think in a situation today, uh, possibly we should go to other councils as well, so they're easier if they want to.
Well, what we, I mean, what we may say to them is that we, we're actually now in a situation where we're no longer, um, payable to actually...
Walked down the road.
Sorry?
Walked down the road.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Yeah, can we move to the... See, actually, she, she wants to do some...
I don't even know, just drop it then.
Sorry about that, I don't want to. Can I have one with standing orders so we can get through rest of the day? All in favour? Don't do that to me again. No, the thing, the thing was, we explained to them that we're, you know, we're going to lose this money. Um, we're no longer going to be in a position where we can, uh, we can actually say, well, you know, you're supposed to pay this rent, but we gave this grant. So they know what position we're in as a council. They know, we are related online to them, but exactly the situation that we're, that we're in. And that we're obviously, we've got to look to people like them. We're going to be looking at other areas as well, so, but we've got to look for people, to people like them to actually start paying the way now. And I'm, they're in, I'm sure they're in a position where they can, and I'm sure they, they're pretty willing to do that. But, um, I mean, if you, it's up to you as a, you know, if you want us, if you want us, uh, want us to send them a figure, that's up to you, you know. But all I'm, all I'm doing is telling you that's right.
I reckon waiting to see what they come back with first and then...
Councillor Smith, thank you.
I think the important thing is that we've, we've opened up a line of communication. And, uh, you know, whatever they come back to us with is open to discussion, you know. And, but I would say with it as, as it is, it's what you've agreed with them and see what they prefer.
We do have one, yeah, we do have one.
I agree with Councillor's, so I think you've, you've made the initial contact now. You've had, you've had a meeting with them, you've given, you've given them something to come back with. It'd be rude of us to, to go back to them before they come back to us.
We did say, you know, at least fifty times, that they don't pay any stuff, they don't, they don't have any wages, they don't have expenses at all. Kept mentioning all this, but, yeah, it was a pleasure to know, um, like I say, I think we've just got, got the trust of them now to send it.
Yeah.
They, they haven't given us any ask for, you know, for any...
Well, I'll mention, yeah.
If, if you look on, uh, if you've got anything for, uh, if they're all, standing, back down there, then say you're responsible for this.
No, I've never mentioned it.
But, but, but what you get is...
Yeah, they have noticed that, to be fair, yeah.
They, they mentioned abandoned, they mentioned, uh...
Basic program, yeah.
Yeah, but I...
They, they, they used to give us half a page, but I've never actually seen it.
Well, I have, but I've got, you know...
But it says, because the last two years have not been it.
Well, I've got one for at least three whole years.
Yeah, it should be in.
Uh, what, what I'm saying is, is I don't have a banner on them, maybe, like everybody else. Because they're just thinking, you know, the town council, it's all...
Yeah. It's one of the things that we need to...
Yeah, I agree with what you're calling what we do, but I wouldn't put the time on when they come back to us. Because if I remember right, it took them four months to come back to us for the application form.
Well, it's their meeting. It's their meeting tonight, so we would expect that we'd have something to put in front of you by, uh, by next meeting. But if we have not, then we need to, uh, we need to jog them up.
I was going to say, it took four months.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, absolutely, but, yeah.
Why were they speaking then if you never got, get brought up about this, uh, extension started, we had, we had a part in the mission process?
Well, they, uh, they, all they've done is they've said that they, they, they would get information. Uh, but actually it started, though, that won't happen till next year.
Uh, the only other thing I want to say about it is that, so you had a good positive meeting. The only thing I don't like about it is where it finishes with, you might pay your rent as long as you can get a wind farm, yeah.
I, I didn't know, so...
I don't saw a wind farm, so it's a bit... What happened was that we objected with two, three euro pollutions, something like that. They applied, and we said, we said no because it's our land. And obviously because it might set the precedent, have a big role to all, yeah. Um, but now they're saying let's have one and we might be able to afford a bit of rent.
I don't, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, uh, that's, well, I mean, that, that's worse, that's worse way of looking at it. I don't think it's, uh, I mean, do you know, to be honest, I think we laid it, we, we gave them enough, um, to know that, um, whatever happens, whether they, whether we can have a wind, we agreed to a windmill or we didn't agree to a windmill, they're going to have to pay this council rent. That's, you know, that's the bottom line.
They'll forget that, even if we agree, it's a, that wind term, I just want to go R and B C to... All, all we can do is agree with them to say, yes, you can have one of our land. If anything over twenty-one foot high, I think you've got top commission up on board. Watch this wind term, five, twenty-two foot. Yeah, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is if it wanted to be part of the negotiation...
No, 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 that's, that's what, that, that's the thing. I mean, it, it kind of got thrown in like that, but as far as I'm concerned...
But they'd agree, they'd agree that they'd have to pay something for the four inch, yeah.
No, they have to pay rent.
Yes.
So we're okay and, uh, we wait for them to come to us. But if it's not, if it's not, if we don't have any information for December's meeting, uh, then we, uh, we, we'll put it on the agenda and then obviously then we'll, uh, we'll decide on what we're going to do from there. But, so, you know, I think, uh, I think that's as far as we can actually go. Um, council news letter update. Um, we've got, yeah, you've got something in front of you, Andy, that, um, different, uh, parish news letters.
So sent on an email. A little, a little bit of research of what others do in the area. Um, Wales, as I think was highlighted last time, are quite a swish. Um, well, they play, that production is completely separate to the council. It's in all magazines, but it's fresh and we've got Kilmarnock and Wales Community Development Trust, which is like a troll, but, uh, I don't know the entire details of the setup. Um, Wales Parish Council pay two thousand six hundred and twenty pounds per quarter for the middle five or six pages. So they're paying a hefty sum, as you've seen, it's a hefty, it's a swept up production. Um, Amsterdam, they produce theirs in-house and it is delivered via the Yorlag magazine. Uh, so I spoke to Yorlag, uh, and they say that for four pages in the magazine, which is delivered to seven thousand households in Dinnington, Amsterdam, or Woodset. Um, and I pressed her a bit further, it seemed a little bit difficult to break it down to just Dinnington with their delivery setup. Um, that would be four hundred and thirty-five pound plus fat issue. If that's what they're to produce, number four pages and deliver. If we produce it and just got them to deliver it, that would just be forty-five pound plus fat, one thousand copies. So if it was four thousand five hundred copies, you're looking at two, two hundred and fifty quid, give or take, what we would need to produce. And like any of these newsletters, I think, and when the councillors came back to me, said essentially, like anything, it's all depends on the quality of books, according to the articles, and we're only heavily on, on the members of the community to contribute to that. So that's a little bit of local research, just a bit of a few of the, but, um, or a few of the thoughts, sorry.
Uh, Amsterdam newsletter, it's only two pages, not always that.
Is it, when you say two, is it just, because it's like, basically, four pages, it's two, it's two sides of A four? Yes, two sides of A four, but because of making it to A five, it comes out as four...
But what it was, the last one, I had, oh, I should say a month ago. And then towards end of last week, they delivered me the same and what they delivered a month beforehand. And not, not all sold. Then you said delivers, will not deliver on council estates.
I think, yeah, it's a good point with delivering, that all depends on the reliability of the delivery people, yeah, I think it's a good point, yeah, yeah.
My concern, um, can, can we just have the cost management regarding...
Yeah.
Um, my concern is if it's in-house, how would that affect, does you count?
I don't, at this moment in time, I don't think we find the time. At this moment in time, we haven't, we haven't got the time to do that. Never mind the expertise to do it, but that's a, aside. Councillor.
Yeah, my concern with Yorlag is that I live in Dinnington, I don't have...
And that, that took, what council, this is, so that delivery.
So maybe, uh, if yours didn't deliver, forgive me at least, but in the posh bits.
Never been told to live in the posh area before.
I, I can't remember, I went to the posh area. We're from a range, mate, I'm...
I'll get one delivered, sorry. At the carnival, we used one, was it last year, it's gone over the year before?
Year before.
Year before, and it proved very problematic, problematic. Um, it didn't get out in times of carnival in certain areas, it didn't, do you know what I mean? So there are many, many problems to look at with. Yeah, people were getting them after the carnival.
It's, it's, just what Brian said about, you said that they don't deliver to council estates. I'm not shocked, but speak, I don't want to revert to Christmas festival stuff, but as, as, as I just said, we're having our leaflets free of charge from, um, W H Brown, being allegedly being delivered free by them all of Dinnington. I had a conversation on Saturday afternoon with the lady at W H Brown, and they've actually been, or they will be delivered to Church Lane with Posh Peak, really. And, um, and Lakeland Drive. And I said, well, what about Rested in Tushes, well, that's what we deliver to now and after. She said to me, all of Dinnington, I thought she meant down this end as well. Obviously not. So I'm, I'm glad you've confirmed that, Brian, because I thought it was a bit strange, but that's why then.
The last one I got, it, where the work is what they're living in.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah.
And what we usually use usually for about a dozen, two dozen, in resource centre.
Yeah, that is exactly what you, what you're describing is what W H Brown have said to me. And I were a bit concerned that our leaflets wouldn't go out all of Dinnington, which sounds like they're not going to.
Probably to, eh, to the cell house, if that, when the, when the combination...
This might be poo poo though, but it's a true, true way of getting the delivery out is that we all take our own area and deliver by ourselves. Me and, me and Councillor Davis have done that in a, but...
And now we should do that as well.
Yeah, now, it's about this house to now, what do we have to do, is if that's not, I'm going to be out of it.
Well, I think, I, I mean, the thing is, is if we, if we decide that, I mean, one of the problems is, is we decide we're going to do it in-house, then it's like, who does it? You know, are you going to do it, you're going to do it, you're going to, you know, it's... No, no, I'm not talking about the members, I'm talking about actually, I'm talking about actually producing it.
It's not a major joint committee, it's more council, so you made it only a few properties, like...
I mean, doing it in-house, so it's just about, well, who does it?
Well, they try, every...
We've done it for, we've done it for, uh, for the... But we did it in Calgareton, we asked for...
We did some enough content for pollued and what, you know, in, in almost intention, so that's what I'm...
No, that's how many, we did about three days or so, and then, but like upon it there, we couldn't do it anymore because we've got more funds. Is there enough content to do it same once and often, once a quarter?
But who's going to do it, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, 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 that's the point is, yeah. If we decided we were going to do it in-house, then, you know, something...
We'll post them on social media. Uh, I know people in Dinnington have got internet, but...
I just think that, yeah, I mean, I just think that at the moment, that's just where to go. It's, uh, you know, and we should, we probably, each of us should put more on it than, uh, than what we do.
Can I make a suggestion that we do use social media and our own website? I think we took, we've got old grants, so we're showing us on there.
That's what we listed on the paper, totally.
Yeah, and I, I know, I understand that you've tied down a bit of time. Uh, but we could also utilise notice boards, I know there's only three of them, but there's a backup and put posters up with any news that we've got.
Can I please have a seat?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, anything, anything like, anything like that, pass it...
I'd never savage board, going walk up as I speak.
We've also, we've also got that A board.
Don't look at me, Jim.
We, we've got the A board that we could put our own if there was anything that we needed to...
What, what if you put an article on Facebook or on the, on the website, is it easy, just to, 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 it's easy to do?
We do it all the time, you know.
It's just when the people actually look at that, so that's why I'm saying the fact of having something that's visible as well.
I think it's mighty important to get these offices on campus, you know, as well as...
That's why I was just saying, we can always have community shops.
Yeah, because we've got it, it gives us that presence, I guess.
It's a bit, you know, at the moment, nobody knows, somebody's got, can walk past it, can't even notice it. Yeah.
Yeah.
So go shopping with all them in the, yeah. You, you could actually have some loops in there, once that's up and running, you could have some loops on, on the tables or whatever.
Can I have one too? It's what we mentioned with Brian, about, I mean, the notice board. There's a don't worry link where they do have it down there. Because we're moving to, they say, let's get some old looking. What about us, see, can we get a notice board at the school grounds or somewhere there? Like, like, shall we have another? This is, we've got three around here and it's done at that end of notice board. So if we get one on the main road of Lord's, don't worry, leg, or don't worry terrace. It could, all the schools and everything there, do a notice board.
How could, can I just add, how could we get more people to use, to look at our Facebook? Because if you're going to certainly look at it, I think it's quite limited, isn't it, really? Couldn't we like have online competitions, I don't know, questions about old Dinnington or things like this? Just spur people's interest on to make them want to go up website and answer questions and give a tenner for the winner.
We can't spend any more money.
Chairman's got a bottle of whiskey going.
Because in social media, we need to get people to look so...
Yeah, Chairman's got a bottle of whiskey going.
Chairman's wife is...
If I were going to get a notice board, I'm going to run this.
Well, that's not, I can't, I can't, that's not the objective, I said, well, what I can do is I need to list, I'm gathering together the present items.
But as I said, we can't, we can't, we can't, we can't put it on, we can't do it on, on this...
We can, we're asked after the...
Can I actually have a look to, can I actually look at some ideas to do on Facebook? I mean, one or two others could get together.
I have no problem with that, whatsoever.
Well, if that's what, if that's what you want to do.
Do you want to admit what we're thinking?
No, yeah, you're quite good at jokes.
Just, you should just want, Chris move things and what have you. Trade them.
One of the things, one thing that got put on Facebook recently, was a little video about Don't worry backs in nineteen sixty-four, and amount of comments on that.
Yeah.
It's, it's, you know, it has still been commented on a week later, hasn't it?
I've gone and started to send it a little bit, I don't know.
Yes, it used to be. He, he make it best, he make it best, I don't know, he makes paper whatever he wants.
Well, that's, I think that's, yeah. I didn't even know, we'd got Facebook, I live on, I live on. I didn't even know, I've got, I've got it tomorrow.
I put one, whatever for on Facebook, so then we post it into four as well.
So, so, so if we, so if we wanna get together, if you want to get together and you come back with some ideas, then that, you know, so that's, that's.
And if anyone else has got any.
Come on guys, share it. Yeah, if you want to do that, that's up to you, you know, that's, you know, they don't, I don't, I don't think.
So if anybody's got any ideas, be like, I'll do it now.
Get it traded, man. Just get a market cut.
I mean, it's like taking odd photographs, and I mean, odd photographs with different angles, where there's a.
I'll just be thinking about that, that's what I know.
Yeah.
You just need to be, get camera.
Oh, I'm enjoying that, eh?
Anyway, your mobile phone's got a camera.
So can we, can we just leave it that we're gonna deal with, we're gonna deal with our that, we're getting all down? Um, to agree a response to R and B C's footpath creation agreement proposal for the footpath on Cranford, Cranford, Britain, Dinnington to Edinburgh Drive, North Amsterdam.
Very, very well done, yeah.
I'm responsible.
I'm sure that, the one thing I found out is that actually, the doctor adopted it to improve in twenty years' use. So it's about twenty years, it's, 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 that's what I expect, that's what I expect. That's what exactly the same as you.
About us, I think is one of the safest ways for children to get the stove.
So are we okay, are we okay with that? Can I have a proposal?
Oh!
Well, you can all put your hands up when I take, did you wanna speak on it, sorry?
No, no, I was agreeing with him.
All in favour? Kenny, Kenny. Decided on recommendations of the, uh, staff pensions working group. Um, we've actually, um, recommending, um, particular things. I don't know whether you all understand, but we, we have the council, after set up, by, by law, we've got to have a, um, a pension system in place for next year, uh, for all, for our staff. Um, they can either join in or they can't, or they don't want, but, but we have to have it in place. Um, and if you remember, we set up a, a small committee to, to deal with that, and we've actually, uh, made decisions on it as well.
So that we go for, uh, the people's pension scheme. There's a few that we looked at, uh, as a group, um, some were very good, but very costly, some were exceptionally basic, and get what we're going for. And we set up a little council as well, so they've always been gone for, the words already, the costly one, um, they've gone for the people's pension as well, so it comes well recommended, and as a, as a group, that's, that's a decision that, uh, that we made. And there's summary on the back, gives a breakdown of how much it may well cost the council, if anybody wants to take through it.
How many staff does this involve, is it six?
We have seven paid employees of council. It's quite part-time, two full-time. Yeah, we are scarce.
So?
You've got two, two staff that are in, you've got the two full-time maintenance staff.
Yourself?
They counted.
Of course.
Not, not everybody earns a salary, well, there's only three people in above the salary, we've got to be able to announce, you know, there's nothing.
Still got Pat Amish as well, eh? People have email, it's for us.
Um, so basically, they've got to have a, we've got to have a scheme in place, it could, if you're all seven employees, um, it may not.
But it doesn't involve the bar staff, or something?
No.
This doesn't.
So are we okay with that? Now we have a proposal, second, all in favour?
I'm abstaining because I don't think we're going to, um, discuss this.
Christmas High Street competition, council.
Now, what this is, is we're always getting people not helping trading Dinnington. Um, what I'm hoping to do is do, uh, a window competition from, uh, first week of December right through to Christmas itself, about Christmas. Uh, we place an item in the window, a unique item, and the kids have to go and find it. Of course, if the kids are looking for it, the, the parents have the ice cream, it's bene- bene- benefiting the footfall on the ice cream, and that's all a retailer wants, is people looking through their windows. If the kids are looking through the windows, the, the adults are looking through the windows, and they're going to find it. So that's the, that's the ethos behind it, and it does actually, does create footfall, do it for three weeks, it will, um, I think it would be beneficial to Dinnington. It's got to be done, done in, um, obviously, uh, very long hours, because virtually every shopping business has got shutters, so it's not something that's ever hours, so, uh, busy trading days, it would be ideal.
What happens if they find it, and what, do they get a prize or anything?
Uh, well, what it is, what, what, what we have, and I have a question for, it'll be free, uh, one post to do is send it to all the local schools. They could put them in the book bags, and then they can hand them in either here or a location of our choice, they can hand them in, and then we just do a draw at the end. Uh, I can get family tickets for the works of cinema, that's not a problem, but I will need help, uh, getting the raffle prizes, uh, traffic prizes, all the prizes to, to, to give out. We've got some wine and chocolates.
A bottle of whiskey.
We've got some, we've got some mail in.
Whatever, I think we might accuse a jerk, having, uh, encouraging kids to drink.
Yeah, we've got two boxes of chocolates, I'm just saying, we've got wine and chocolates, uh, you would be.
It's a three week, or is it every day you do it, or is it once?
No, they, they can do it throughout three weeks.
Do it all three weeks.
So it's just, it's just lasting three weeks, so if they can have any opportunity, they don't get them all in one day, they can go, look at Saturday.
Yeah, yeah.
They can keep dragging the pair.
Do they think, no, and that's what I'm trying to say, is there, is there something in the window every day for three weeks?
What, what I'll do is, what I'll do is, say it's a unique this reindeer, but, I mean, but got to find something unique, I do this competition, it works out as well at Easter, yeah, chick. Um, but for, for this competition, it'll have to be a unique item, and I will go round, or wherever goes round, and we will actually shopkeep, and we just play with these in your window. I wonder where they're all, they all are, and then when it comes to where we're gonna do the draw, maybe twenty-third of December or whatever, um, the first correct entry out of, out of box, uh, what's, what's right, got all, got all the locations. What they'll have, probably fifty, uh, one in, um.
Superdrug.
So it could be a standard, yeah, yeah, they've got to be kind of enclosed windows, they've got to be, you know, somewhere, a bit safety in it, um. So, so, so they'll have a list, they'll have a list, and the first one, what gets all, every single one on the list, that's why it's got to be unique, because for Christmas, if you put a Santa Claus in the window, then somebody might have it exactly the same Santa Claus. So I will have to try and get. Sorry? Yes, goes, yeah. It's not like I did that, so this will be the Santa Claus. Yes. It's got, it's got something, something we can actually buy.
Dave, what, you'd wait for three weeks in December?
And you watch Poppy at window.
And the other part is mainly for, um, the school holidays, is an item in the window, what's not supposed to be there, you know, like, um.
About the Christmas.
Something that's shot themselves, yeah, there's loads of variations, you can do it.
Cool, because we've got a radio on the window.
Yes, good idea, yeah, that was, there's little things like that, but what, what I would need is, I would need help in kind of, try to get raffle prizes, uh, raffle prizes, uh, prizes for, for this, and I would need, um, probably help with the printing from the office staff. Um, and, um, so that it's money to skip, to buy, purchase the, the item. I would say, I would say we do fifteen, you know, for the ice cream, we can use them again next season, I mean, it's a recipe, I just got there, fifteen, you need that, to put in the window. I would say possibly fifteen thousand, because that, if, if, if the, if the printing could be done in the office, all, all it would need is some, for, you know, to, to share out the work, though, is to kind of like, all this good art school, just asking, kind of, for these people, to share the work. How many raffle prizes do you think you want? Um, it's, it's either a lot of little things, or a few ones, it's about five, I think. Yeah, about five, we're gonna get five, do five.
It's only, what, what age do you have to children?
Uh, to be honest, still anybody, but I, I don't, I don't surmise us getting any kind of, like, any prizes, what, won't do for a child. Do you know what, it's not the criteria on things.
But I think, I think, I, I think the thing is, is that it would be good that we aim at children, rather than that. We are, we are saying we're aiming at.
All the infants and juniors then.
You say no, they're going to be a lot. Or sixteen.
The council are sort of trying originally, where just get people looking in the shop. I don't think you need to isolate it to a children's prize, because you want everybody looking in the shop.
Yeah, no, but the kids, if, if it's kids, it will not be let land on the ice street on the road, so therefore, it's a parent. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know how many adults would actually go round and do it. It's, it's a kid, it's, it's with the kids, just dragging the pair, it's a funny, it's a funny thing. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You've got two of them, you can ask a practice for a couple of tickets.
Oh, yeah, that would be brilliant, yeah, the pantomime, yeah, pantomime, yeah, that would be brilliant, it's a good idea.
Is that the four or five, or are they two names?
Get a couple of, of practice for kids, yeah, that would, that would be great.
Hasn't you all got a, a bit trouble, we've got, um, go on, guillotine?
I've got guillotine, I'm laminating it.
Just a guillotine, if you could print some stuff and it's.
I think I might, I think I might resolve this, Kevin, it's a guillotine. So anyways, I believe, I think it's a great idea.
But I would need to, um, just to get them all rolling.
Well, we're only talking about thirty cash hours, so we, uh.
So can I just go ahead and write something, I think it's appropriate.
Well, let's, can we have a proposal in a second, if we, if we. All in favour? Yeah, I think, yeah, there's no problem.
So shall I put it on my Christmas budget, because I think it'll stand there.
That's, that's, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's Christmas, and of course, it's going to be the Christmas budget anyway, you know, so.
I don't go around with the touch shots of the, of the stores.
Well, we need to know what the ra, we need to know what the prizes are before I can do all the, all the posters and all the.
So you need, you need, you need it sorted out before next meeting, don't you?
We've got two that lost, so. Oh, right, that's two. Oh, yeah. Aren't you having one? Oh, well, that's.
Sure.
All the time, we would put, we can put a couple of main prizes on it, and then put all the prizes to be won.
So how are we gonna, how are we gonna deal with it, as far as, because it's gotta be sorted out before next meeting.
Well, I can give you a, a few nice, really soft toys, because I'm not having a stall this year.
If we can get, if we could get the athletic tickets, I can get the works off, uh, I think that'd be enough to put on there, to generate people's interest. So if we can just, if I can go with that, and then just put all, and then you have the prizes to be won.
And you've got, you've got, you've got all our contact details, right, so if you want it, if you need contacting, if you need to contact any of us, because you need help to, to do everything.
Do you want to?
So can we move, can we move on now? Um, so, uh, donation to David's Court, Reeve, Room Meyer, um, that's what we've normally done anyway, when we've got meetings.
I think Kevie, we could have did it in the long block last time, I think about eighty quid, I think it's through.
What I'm gonna say is that we keep coming back, and we do have some meetings down there, we're going to pay this some money, because it just, it'll be back up again, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah. You want to propose that?
Yeah.
All in favour?
This side, it's one, two, three, it's, ah, 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 ah.
To a, to a great update to the, uh, emergency plan. When's getting them out, eh?
Right, I did give you hard copies of the emergency plan, a couple of copies here, that you can see how big it is. Um, the, the plan was first brought in two years ago, um, I've been through, I've been through with, uh, the, 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 as well.
Excuse me, can you speak up, I'm struggling to hear you.
Sure, yeah, anyways, um, this, this emergency plan was brought in two years ago, um, I've been in touch with the guy, Rotherham Borough, who looks after it from their perspective, and been through it myself, the main amendments are essential to take out references to Sheffield. I think when Rotherham Borough wrote in their plan, we just adopted it at the time, and it makes quite a few references to linking in with Sheffield authorities as well, and the reality is if a situation kicked off, we would liaise in with Rotherham, not Sheffield. And if we did have to do any liaise with Rotherham, uh, with Sheffield, so we could give it to Rotherham in the first place, that was more for Rotherham, they're for their own, they used the plan, not for any of the societal real amendments on going. So it's only minor, everything else is still, um, extends in terms of the major detail, of course, names are, names are, not contacted, it hasn't changed, and they will be updated as well.
And I say it's been out about five or six years, actually.
Has it, well, that, that particular one's got.
Probably updated it then, probably, what we had it, because I know I've had my copy for about five or six years. Can I just ask, uh, in the event of an emergency, would we just all be contacted and told what to do, how it works?
Essentially.
How it works is, well, when they get contacted, say, Dave gets contacted, Dave has to go on the next person to contact them, and if you can't contact them, it goes on to the next person, and then that person takes over to contact the next person on this. That's how it works, not straight up council.
Yeah.
Clearly it's an apocalypse.
That's how, that's how it works.
That's what the first thing to do, to dig out.
Sorry, I've, I've had a look through it, and one, just one little concern, um, you've got the salvation army down, but you've got it down under councillor's skull?
I told them, I told them that original when they first did it.
I remember, because you, you mentioned it.
Nobody asked me, I told them, nobody even asked me to, because I'm commissioning it now.
Just that detail's one yourself, should be, but, so that needs.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that you keep an eye for issues, and you're able to find them anyway.
So that needs amended, then, yeah.
I'm big famous, yeah.
And, uh, anything else, anybody spotted? Yeah, still got one, some for marketing. And if, anything else anybody spotted, you know, read, but, yeah, still got one to solve the market on.
That's not, that's still a hour, that's not being, instead of hour.
Are you aware as well councillor Scott, that you're down for the welfare land?
Well, you can go on that.
That'd be a good.
You can park here and get your quit.
We'll have to wait while we get the key from this one.
Yeah.
I don't know whether I can keep these meetings up like this. The, the, the charity of it, all these two mugs. So, so we are okay on, don't need to, uh, what's on the door.
Were you all getting a copy of this?
Yeah, you get, you get.
Yeah, quite, quite cemented, yeah, yeah. Uh, Park Avenue Cemetery, Lyric Theatre, Loveland Land.
Yeah, there's still, yeah.
Hope day for from Lyric Management Committee, if you still want to do that.
I think I've got to say, it's about getting two hotels and a potter, so they're, they're not different, I just can't spell them.
So, but, so we can count that as being the article.
Well, I was just going to ask, obviously this is happening tonight, but we have got a guy coming to try and clean up some of the amplification equipment in here. Um, I don't know where, where we stand now, because obviously we've been covered time. Um, he's coming to clean them because the amps are desperate, they need cleaning.
Well, we're, yeah, I mean, just tries to interrupt, but the thing is, is what Paul's actually saying is, is that we can't stop projects and we can't stop, you know, there's no major expenditure. But if we need, if things need maintaining, then they need maintaining and we've got, you know, we've got funds to pay for maintenance on things. I mean, it's like this fan and whatever, they're extracted that, so he's saying kind of, you know, because, um, I know from what I've heard, he's the, the, uh, doing a bit of a parlor state as far as cleaning is concerned. So, you know, that's, you know.
It seems that we've got to do to keep place held.
Because we just don't, we, we don't seem to have, um, have ever set up maintenance contracts on anything. So, you know, that's what, that's one of the things we're going to need to look at at some point in time, councillor.
Yeah, it's not an expenditure, it's hopefully an in, an additional income in that we've reviewed completely, probably bar prices that haven't been viewed for some years. And the job change we are, we've worked out that based on last month's, well, the last four week stop date that we did, had to be in place. We've actually generated an extra three hundred pounds for that month. And the income's actually increased a little bit, particularly for stop periods, so that should be better and make us a bit, a lot more profitable, profitable as well. And I think there's a thing at the back that shows you.
The, the plan is to, to be increased in place when the new turns come, so that we set the new tools up with, with yellow glasses.
I mean, to be honest, I think it really shows that, that committed work in his doing, it's pretty much, um, what we wanted him to do. So I think, uh, you know.
You're working out.
You're all doing, uh, you're all doing brilliant with it, so, um. Oh, cleaning, uh, with lyric gutters.
Well done, guys, you're going to clean them.
Right, and the letters are on the side of the stage.
That's okay.
Lots of, lots of ink here.
Money we're going to spend on this place, I think you'll go fabulous. But what team buildings and pouring, or, or tech that, uh, didn't, junior school, guttering were down for nearly a year. And I don't want us to spend money and forget all about guttering. If we could have a plan saying, right, every, I don't know, six months or before, that could September or something like that, and it's down, the gutteries have to be done. So we don't.
Have it costing?
No, I've just wrote it a plan.
So we have a.
But it's already saying, all right, I agree with what you said, but if we want to spend all this money here, I'm sure it'll look fantastic. But if gutters are going to come down, it's going to be a waste of money.
Yeah, I mean, we have a, we have, we work off a pressure, we have routine maintenance, so we can't, what we'll do is add it to that as an annual, even if it's just a cursory check, not a time this year. There's nothing really in it, we're getting a big, we're getting a big copy, let's get somebody to do a couple, a few couple of quarters. We have, we have, we have a cheque.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
When was the last time they were cleaned?
Well.
I was going to say, apart for three.
Yeah, but you're right, it's things like that, we need to keep, uh, check on.
Yeah, we'll add it to it, to it.
Deneetown Town Council, Grant's is nil. General Motors file. There's no, no, uh. Do we, uh, I mean, to be honest, it's not, we don't have any, we don't have any things on this running file anyway, so I think we can take it off our agenda and, uh, until such times as it's needed again and then we'll put it back on if we need to. This running file, otherwise, you might as well consider it on for a little while, while it's on, we can see it. Yeah, yeah, that's fantastic, you can come up with that, yeah. Yeah, for the, anyway.
Doesn't see it.
Yeah.
I think there was a slight change on that idea when you spoke with several different people, one of the ideas was.
Well, we're.
May impact people anyway.
I've told you, I've asked you that, yeah, sorry.
I was just following.
I know you're.
So run in front of the side, run in front of the side.
It's jumping in on me, that's.
That could be a, what they were whispering.
One of councillors, one of councillors before we had got that, so, uh, now we can do. This, to consider a home for the Deneetown miners banner, that's, uh.
I think we'll have to do it till next meeting.
One of the things is that we, um, we, we can't have it, he's been over at college, uh, for a long time. Uh, they, they don't want it anymore, uh, and we need, uh, a home for it. Uh, and as far as I, I'm concerned, I think we're in its ideal place for it. It gives us access to it when we need it, um, and if, I think that he's right that it, um, it should be, and it's, it protects it.
What I'm going to say is, uh, we are, then we had that novelty that sat here.
No, that's right.
And I think that it, it's got somewhere here permanently. And as councillor Clark was saying, councillor Scott should have it there, but I think, yeah, on this back wall, uh, moved the plaque which was supposed to be moved last year anyway.
Problem with that, problem with that. It's just a bit fair tables and chairs keep going in there, it's really fat protecting.
What about me, do I like gallery, I'm going to like wall.
I was going to say. I was going to say, mate.
Wait, just, well, before we go, before we fly off in all directions, we've got to agree whether we, we agree that it can be lyric. That's.
Can I speak?
Councillor.
The problem we are, I am often Deneetown, I was born in British Sheffield, I can do this village, right? However, that's the heritage, that is the heritage, the, I don't think that I should be in here, honestly, because there's not enough people using it. I would reckon that five or six times more people would use the resource center here. They have large panels in the resource center, mining hardware based on resource center, people in town, not just for, you know, use the area.
Well, the one thing they don't want it, for them, we can't get access to it.
That's, that's a problem. But this will build around time.
No, I'm good, not time, I'm good, nobody will see it before.
And unless we use the.
But you, you say mine, but nobody's seen it during the resource.
Once we got, once we got the guardian of itself, it could go with that side with that. Oh, yeah, that, that really, that might be a side with the guardian of.
Well, we need to, we need to protect, I mean, can I just, can I just, just get to hear history of banners? It's like, first one, uh, is over hundreds of years old, uh, it's in a bit of a parlor state and it's, uh, that's the mining museum. It's only allowed to be, uh, taken out, uh, for maintenance, no, it can't be on display. So that, that's the realest, uh, the Deneetown mines. The second one is, uh, the one that went through strike with us, that's in church along with, um, memorial to miners that were killed at Deneetown. This one is the, uh, the only one that we can have use of, I suppose, because we, uh, we're going to Durham Miners' Gala, we, we have it out for different, uh, other things. So what we need is, we need it somewhere where we get access to it all the time, you know, where we can definitely have access. So this is a, this is for us, um, is the best place for it to be. And I take your point about, uh, not that many people and whatever, but it's, it's about it being saved, it's about us, us being able to have access to it. And that's why we, we actually want to get it in Deneetown, councillor, so anything, councillor?
Just one thing though, that wonder how conservative it being in college was, they were talking about having it professionally rolled and stored. The danger with that is whoever stores it leaves and nobody knows where it is and it's disappeared and knows it and we haven't got access to it. And that's what we're concerned about, isn't it?
Councillor.
Not my original plan, falling off of councillor's face, that's what happened with the first banner, it was rolled, it was stored and we found it in a empty park house. But what I put me on the floor is, I want to propose that we put it in the lyric.
I'll start with that. So anybody else want to speak on it?
When you said keep it here, you're talking about keeping it on display then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm only just, I've got no to get minors. I'm only just saying because, um, it brought up that some young people don't understand what's going on there. I know people are asking for weddings here, oh, yeah, weddings here. And I don't know whether that might put some people off the, I don't want to, I don't want to make a bigger old banner, don't take offence.
But we're answering that, Neil, that is why.
Some people think like that, don't they?
Yeah, we're answering that, Neil, that's why I suggested in that tour.
It's all said to be wanting, not that you can't get access, but for that exactly, so that they don't want it on there.
If it's in that corner.
Yeah, totally agree with it.
For the wedding, it's like, for the, for the, for the.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things, one of the things we, we thought about, I mean, my, my first, uh, feeling on it was that I wanted it up there, you know, where everybody could see and all the rest of it. And, uh, and it's got pointed out to me. If you had, if, if you, if that were your top table at a wedding and you were having photographs, I'm not sure that everybody, I'm not sure that everybody, I'm not sure that everybody would want to have Deneetown miners banner, uh, behind it. You know, obviously people don't feel the same about it as we do, you know, it's important, but, um, and we, so, and it's important, I mean, the ideal place for it, as far as we're concerned, is for it to go in, in, uh, Milne Land. It's important to, uh, and it's possible that we could have other members be living there as well.
Chad?
Because it's important as well, because it's important as well, where, uh, kids learn about it now and, um, you know, that, uh, we, we don't want to lose this.
If it's opened into there, um, and it gets put through there, will it, how open market is there of, will there be a, will there be a first phase?
It has to be, it has to be covered, it has to be covered.
Yeah.
But what we need to agree is whether we have a, whether we are prepared to allow it to be, um, all, you know, it's housed in lyric.
Councillor Art's asking how would it be funded, a case, if it was in a case, how would it be funded?
We'd have to fund it as a, as a, as a miners group, we'd have to fund it. Has anybody else got any objections?
Well, just another suggestion, if you had it on there, you could have a curtain over it. An opening top or if people objected for some reason, like you've just said, they could close the curtain.
Yeah.
The same, that's, that's not quite all where it is now, draw that, and prove to it.
Yeah, but you've got, yeah, you don't keep moving it, I would, you may have wanted to, they were.
No, I'm saying if it was on the back wall, what, the straw covers it, you know?
Yeah, but that.
It's in the square, it's this place.
What we can't, what we can't have with it, what, what we can't have with it is that if we can't have it open, it has to be, it has to be housed in a case, that, that's the thing with.
You get, not up, right down that corner.
That corner there.
That, that door, not, not over there.
I mean, all we agreed to is going in, uh.
I've already, nobody proposed it here.
Always there, we should, we house it here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thanks, but that's great, now, now we can have, now we can have an argument, we can decide later on, but, uh.
And this proposed it was in there.
Propose it was in there.
And I just said, people that aren't aware that costs several thousand pounds, can't remember that exactly, but, um, it is worth quite a bit, I want to say.
It's also double sided for those who don't realise.
But like I say, because in there, it's going to get marked, because we all should turn.
No, it'd be a case.
It's in a case, but.
Well, the case.
We've seen it there, do we? We've never seen it there. You know, we're here, Rick, it's up in that corner, somewhere about that, lost step in that corner.
But when they've gone storage next door.
That's where I said, that's where I said, it's in a case, the next door.
Well, hopefully that's what happened fairly soon, with the next month.
I do please that.
We can, having decided, having decided that, you know, that it is going to be out here, I think that we all have to get our ideas together and in December we'll decide, um, you know, we're.
That's what made it an old miners' trip, it's what I mentioned.
Well, that's, shall we get it down?
Yeah, I mean, would you, would you be, would you be prepared to, uh?
I'm saying let miners commit to it and decide where they want it, rather than the council.
A big recommendation.
We've agreed that it can stop in here, but let them decide as a group where they want it.
If I were a miner, I'd want to bang in the middle of that back wall, just what you've just said, you'd go, oh.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
It's got double sides.
If I were a miner.
That's where I want it, yeah, exactly.
Bang in the middle of all of it.
So it needs a clean.
I think it's.
Could we not ask miners for their input, could we not ask miners for their input on an ideal place where they want it?
Yeah.
Now, and then us decide.
Sorry, I was just going to say, propose, or say, whether if we sort between us two, three different places, then allow the miners to, which is better one actually, that way we cover, do you know what I mean?
Okay, well, I think.
Just, just one quick one, we do actually use some of these back panels for videos and things like that, so that, that is another issue. I mean, we've actually got that one that wants to be used and that one.
You've got a big role in thinking about, yeah, Gibson.
It's a big role in Gibson. Display it, hey, we want to know, yeah, this one.
Yeah.
Um, so even though it's in a case, you want to be able to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be a whole space.
Yeah, because, uh, obviously, uh, it's, uh, as handed by elementary boys, if you had to be for miners, nor is it for certain on this table, so, you know. So for us, I mean, we have a, I know that, that's my, we've got a vested interest in it, but, um, having agreed that, you know, that we can have it in, it is, you know, it is down to councillor to actually tell us where we can have it. You know, so, I know, you know, you keep juggling that about that. So I think, I mean, I think it's a good idea, if you, if you think about it, think about like, you know, where we could have it, uh, and we'll, we'll get actively together, we'll think about, um, think where we want it. And then we think as we should be able to track it out and, and exactly where it's going to go, um, this week and after that, but, uh. Thanks, thanks for your time, and thanks for your patience for, uh, we'd be next to have a lot of time.
Yes, if you want to say anything about salvation, what's.
They never ring that.